The City and Norco City Council meeting agenda, this is the budget workshop for Wednesday, May 16th at 4:00 PM. The roll call, please.
Council members Newton, Hannah, Bash, Mayor Protem Grunmeyer, Mayor Hoffman.
Yes.
All present.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Hannah, please.
(inaudible) (inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up. Appreciate it. This is a continuation of our draft fiscal year 2018-2019 operating budget presentation. And it says Finance Officer, but I believe we left off...
(inaudible)
To Chad or Steve?
Public Works.
Public Works?
He's last.
Can you remember what page that was on so we can look at it?
It is page 30.
30.
In your revised budget.
Correct. So for those councilmembers, they have the 5/2, the May 5th one. Gina gave us a newer updated version with corrections from May 16th.
And some added slides.
On page 30 with some additional information. So without further ado, Mr. Chad, are you ready?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, council and public that were able to attend. The first item we're going to talk about today is the Engineering Department, which provides services for...
Chad, is your mic on?
Yep, it's on. For water sewer and gas tax funds that we use for engineering. Basically, we're expecting a minor change in that fund for this next year, mainly attributed to salary adjustments and pension-related costs. Those otherwise that work, amount of work that we do there and duties we have is fairly flat. We'll move to Public Works Inspection, which has several sources of funding, as you can see in the slide. In this one here, we're expecting an 11% increase. Basically, the higher difference is related to salary adjustments and pension-related costs. Again, and this is going to be a recurring thing for most of the increases, most of our funding departments are going to be fairly flat as far as new activities that we're doing. But mainly, most of these increases are related to increases to benefits, et cetera, in the pensions. Parkway maintenance, it's actually a little bit of a reduction, primarily that is due to... We didn't spend as much money as we did the year before, mainly because there was court crews that weren't available. We depend on a lot of court crews, and we pay those court crews to do work out in the field, to remove a lot of the weeds, et cetera. So we didn't spend as much money as we thought we would. And also, we didn't use a little bit of the, quite a bit of the money, actually, we do for trails. You know, we get that $25,000 for trails. Well, we normally leave it for the end of the year as needed. A lot of times, it just goes towards storm damage, et cetera, where we take those funds and fill some of the ruts and stuff in the trails. So we actually didn't spend much of that money. So we actually did about a $5,000 reduction in the overall budget to accommodate that. And then increased tiny, a little bit for pensions, et cetera. But, so it's actually seeing a small reduction in that regard. Street maintenance, it's about a 50% increase. That particular one is basically related to what we're proposing here, and it's a significant change, is we've been kind of been doing a Band-Aid approach to tree trimming throughout the city for a long, long time. And for many years, it's been suggested that we be go to a five-year trimmings program. So wherever, so through that process, we will get through the entire city in five years. So we're basically building zones. There'll be five different zones. In each zone, there's five different subzones. And so that in each zone, we'll touch one subzone. So each area will have at least a zone touched every year. So we're not just focusing on one portion of the city at a time. It will be spread around the city. So we did get some costs from our, some WCA to do the tree trimming, what it would cost to do that. So this budget, this 15% increase includes that new tree trimming cycle that we'd like to start if it's approved by the council. It will, again, take a good five years to get through everything. So we will still do not only the tree trimming that we have programmed as a specific budget, we still have tree removals we need to do from time to time. We always have money in there for storm damage, et cetera, emergencies, plus miscellaneous tree trimming that we know we will get requests on when, you know, for folks that need it in between their, when their cycle's going to hit, when they're going to get their tree trimmed. So we will, and that's just going to happen until you get completely through an entire cycle. You're going to get other requests versus us saying, well, your tree will get there in the next three years. We might come out and do some minor trimming, et cetera. So there's going to be additional work beyond the traditional tree trimming that they're going to do. So that increase incorporates a big, most of that portion is because of that. And so we're hoping to get support on that. It is an increase. Last year, as far as dollars-wise, it was about $170,000. We had, excuse me, $190,000 we had budgeted, and now it's going up to $250,000. And that's to cover, again, tree trimming cycle each year, and then miscellaneous trees we need to remove at time to time, and then miscellaneous tree trimming we have to do in between. So we're, again, we're trying to make sure not to have a buffer and not just focus on just the trees that's going to be in the cycle. So we need some wiggle room for that first five-year period as we go through. And that will be an annual cost every year. It's not just one year, it's annual to keep that up. Hopefully, after five years, we have removed a lot of the dead material, we can remove our dead, dead tree costs out of there, and we've now caught up with our tree trimming cycle, and we can then lower those out-of-cycle trimmings that we expect and kind of reduce that down to a more manageable level instead of, and maybe get, hopefully, that point, maybe to $200,000, you know, so we're on an annual basis rather than $250,000. So I just want to give you perspective of what specifically is impacting that particular Storm and rain operations, again, is going up 7%, primarily due to increased cost-related additional monitoring and compliance reporting we have to do related NPDS, some salaries in there related to certain staff that were spread around in that department, a minor change. Just so you note, the NPDS will probably have a mid-year change. Again, there's a lot of new rules that the state has related to NPDS, and the expectations that the cities have on doing not only monitoring but reporting, that we need to make sure we're caught up, which may involve, and I'm still evaluating additional consultants to do work for us, or potentially hiring another staff person to keep up with those duties. They're getting pretty significant in as far as what they expect, and they're actually following up with it. Again, right now, we're in the evaluation stage, but I just want to let you know that at that point, we're comfortable with the budget as is, but maybe something we come back and revisit, and we'll explain at that time if we do revisions why they're necessary. But it's related to state regulations, requirements. But right now, this current budget doesn't reflect any of those things. It's simply just pass-through costs related to minor reporting and employee increases related to benefits. So water operations, again, we're, it's going to remain fairly flat. We've adjusted things within the budget to shift things around based off of how we've operated in the year. And, you know, plenty of money where we need to do. Again, every year, we try to use as much of our well water as we can to reduce our costs, but we still have the take-or-pays. And we're continuing to work with Corona and their purchase of some of that water, which helps our obligations and reduces our overall costs. So, and that, and Corona has continued with that effort this year and participating, taking some of that Arlington water that is our take-or-pay requirement. For 2018-19, again, what we're doing here is purchase water costs have a projected increase for Arlington. Again, it doesn't mean in the end we pay as much, but they do have an increase that they budgeted in, already told us what that increase would be. One-time inspection and cleaning of all the reservoirs. We recently did our state inspection with our inspector, came from up north and reviewed our entire water system. One of the things she highlighted was that we have not done any inspections on our reservoirs in quite a long time. So we are funding inspecting all seven reservoirs this one year. Basically, that involves, we're hiring a diver, they go in there, they use video, they take pictures of any issues in there, make an official report that we review, they'll also vacuum out any miscellaneous debris that you may find, sand or soap material, so that we get a cleaning at the same time we get an inspection. And then we will follow up regarding any actual repairs or improvements we may need to do. We're not anticipating anything. We don't have a lot of sanding or water quality issues that would give an issue that we think we might have in the reservoirs, but we have at least documented, we've done that for the state, so we're now including that in this next year's budget. Again, minor required salary adjustments or pension-related costs that are in there also does include what the council approved earlier last year in this current fiscal year is an increase in the annual expenditures we have for our road repairs related to water main breaks. Again, we continue to have quite a few breaks, and we're spending an awful lot of money with our consultants who repair the roads after we're done. So it doesn't add $200,000 into that, into the operating budget to cover that. But again, we shifted it with other changes in other departments and other subcategories within the water fund. So overall, again, we're very comfortable with this budget. We're, again, we're trying to focus on doing more maintenance, more on-hands work with the system so that we can, you know, have less repairs we have to do overall in managing the system. But overall, with how we're doing it, we're predicting a 6% increase in with those changes, which is, I think, is good. Sewer operations, primarily the one thing on this issue is, again, we're expecting to spend less than we budgeted, and that's always a good thing. We are budgeting a little bit more than we have in the past. This is a really what we'll call a shifting year in that we've had a lot of changes occur at RICRA, meaning the treatment plant is finally done. We're required to now start paying the debt service on the SRF loan that paid for that new treatment plant. There are additional costs related to managing that plant now that we have to pay for. There are also reserve policies that have been in many years in the coming for operations reserve, debt service reserve, and equipment capital reserves that are now also being implemented. They're all hitting at once. So this is that resulting of impact of why they're occurring and why the shift. And even with that, it's 7% with all those changes with a brand-new plant. And again, it's a fluid thing where, you know, we do have our own representatives, a representative, which is the mayor, at this year on RICRA. And again, we've all sat in the, with the mayor, excuse me, I've sat in with the mayor on that, the board meetings. And again, we did discuss these things at length as far as whether necessary, why they're necessary. And it's, you know, we just, I guess, the overall opinion on, for the board, I would say is we just, while we're not happy with the increases, being a new plant, we don't want to underestimate, we don't want to be underprepared, we want to enable RICRA to manage the plant effectively and not have to come to us every little thing to request more money for repairs. So part of this includes standby equipment that's going to be stored in a warehouse that they feel is critical to use and have on hand, so they don't get violations, which has happened in the past with the plant, et cetera. So this will be a very fluid cost estimate such that every year, and even in mid-year, we may review it, certainly every year at budget time, we're going to look at and find out, how did these recommendations pan out? Did they make sense? Were they too much? Were they too little? And make adjustments accordingly. So it's not something in stone, and I believe the board is very sensitive to the fact that the budget is going up and are going to be diligent about trying to minimize it wherever they can. And that's all the funds at this time, and I'd be happy to review any questions you may have.
All right. Does anybody have any questions of Public Works? Chad, starting now, Greg.
Good afternoon, Chad.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple, three questions. On NPDES, is there any avenue where we can collect funding to try to offset some of these costs?
I guess my candid answer would be is I don't know. Since I have not built up an NPS program to where you actually have active fees charged or even staff, to be candid, that on a daily basis go out and look for that and make sure there's proper compliance, it's something we have to look for. We have, I need to talk with, you know, my counterparts in other cities, find out what they do and have these programs, what fees, if any, they charge and how they do it. Because certainly, anything that we propose, I want to come with those suggestions of, if we implement this fee, you know, part of the permit or construction process, it's allowed per state rules, and here's how other agencies have done it, and we would implement that or recommend it be implemented.
Because as you mentioned, as the state adds on more requirements, and we may need to hire a part-time employee or an outside consultant on this, that, do we have anything in our Public Works fee schedule, any, anything that we can charge on projects or development to offset this?
I need to look at. I honestly have not investigated to find out. I just want to make sure that, and give the emphasis that it's something I'm ramping up for and preparing to review and to give, you know, a good report to the council some way. Here's what we've learned and assessed, and look at what we may already have available to us versus what we need to add in. I just don't know.
Okay. I mean, I'd appreciate that, because I know in the past, we always had a budget of $125,000 for that, and it was just a loser every year. There was no offset.
Greg, if I may add to that, is that most of the requirements for NPDS, the city is prohibited from actually charging fees other than the assessment that is allowed. And in recent years, we have had an audit of those assessment rules to be sure that we are collecting the maximum amount that is allowed under the law. And as a result of that, the revenues we are collecting going into that fund has increased over the last two years, which is the reason why we no longer transfer $50,000 we previously did from the general fund to this particular fund to help fund the expenditures. I know over the years, the state, League of California Cities, as well as Public Works Directors across the state, they have been looking at options by which state law can be passed to allow cities to recover some of the costs that are associated with complying with this stormwater runoff procedures. Those studies are ongoing, and they want to do it on a statewide or perhaps a regional basis, but again, it requires some passage of legislation to allow cities to collect more than what they are currently allowed to do.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. And just, just water fund, I know you had mentioned Arlington Salter going up in cost on take and pay, but also, even though it's not much CDA, it's 1,000 acre feet, and that's a small increase there also. And then last, somewhat of a question, I guess, or comment on sewer fund and the ongoing cost increases with RICWA. And I certainly don't want to take any influence on the mayor's opinion on this, but I don't believe those costs are ever going to go down until you get rid of Western Municipal running the operation. Has there been any movement forward to another entity being more the manager of RICWA?
Nothing public has been discussed about that. So that's about all I could say about that.
So it's a closed-session item for RICWA?
No, I just, again, no one's publicly said anything
Okay.
On record that they want a change or that somebody's, or Western even saying they're willing to let it go.
Until now?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, that's just my observation and opinion. If you, if all the members are serious about reducing overhead and costs, I think that's the place to look. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Kevin. Berwin, go down there.
I just got, I got a question. Did you take delivery on those two new trucks yet? Didn't we order two new vacuum trucks?
Yes, we did. We actually took them, I think it was last week, and we have already started using them.
Okay. Are they the same white or, because I saw a new truck a couple of days going up Sixth Street that was multicolored, and I didn't know if that was one of ours or...
I don't know. I haven't seen them yet. I just got reported they were in, so I haven't seen a picture of them. So they may be multicolored. I don't know if they're white, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, and this one didn't have any city seal on it, so I didn't know if they were ours or not.
Gotcha.
All right, thank you.
Robin?
Chad, I got a couple things. And the, the street maintenance with the trees, is all part of the urban forest plan that we put together? Is that what this, on the five-year plan, is that what you're following there?
I mean, as far as the, any type of removals or whatnot, yes. I mean, it would certainly be part of that process. Again, what we're talking about removals-wise is really just stuff that's just dead. I mean, it's, and we need to remove because for safety reasons, that's what I'm referring to. As far as our water management, urban forest plan, that's more referring to if we're going to plant trees, what type should they be, how should they be done, et cetera.
And you, I think you answered my question, then. If we held off, our liability would increase on that if we didn't go through with this five-year plan, of course?
Potentially, certainly it can. I mean, I don't say, I don't say things for sure, but it's a possibility, yeah.
Okay. And then on the NPDS, and I think, carryover, if, I know that there's a substantial amount of fines, and when did the state indicate that they would start fining us if...
Well, again, they haven't done anything formal. They've just, and we've been learning this process through various meetings with regional partners, WR COG and others, and we meet with them, they're kind of informing us as agencies that the state's starting to ramp up and kind of give their, give guidelines of things they're looking for, expectations about reports and paperwork they expect to have on hand when they're, when they do any type, if they choose to do any type of compliance monitoring on each agency. So we're all trying to get our hands around it, say, here's, here's what we, that we're not doing, based off of what the state kind of has given us hints on, and how do we get to that point? So that's part of what I'm in the process now, is figuring out where we need to get to make sure we don't get in, in the situation where we were in the past, where we were getting heavily fined.
So, and without finding a specific violator here in the city, which I'm hoping that the city attorney said we can legally go after if they were, unless it's us, I mean, you don't have the staff if we find something like that, correct?
I would envision to say no. I mean, we're already doing a lot of other duties within, within the assigned positions I have. But again, until I know exactly the scope of how much time they have to spend on a day doing these various things, I couldn't adequately answer that question. I may be able to get somebody to do some of those things with the staff I have, but until I get my arms wrapped around everything they expect and the level of work and detail it has to be, I wouldn't, I would venture to say I'd probably have to hire somebody else or get a consultant to do it on our behalf.
Okay. So, but we're, right now, we're doing good?
We're, I'm in compliance at this point, but again, it's, I've got to get, make sure I'm ahead of the game.
All right. And then I'll go back to the Public Works and Water Fund, the water tank. How many years are we supposed to be doing that?
Tradition, and again, it's not a set thing, but they expect you to do it between every three to five years.
Okay, so there's nothing we can hold off on?
We've, I've done it for at least seven.
Oh, okay, all right. All right. Thank you. Any other questions? I'll go to Planning, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. We're projecting a year-end reduction from the amended budget due to some vacant part-time positions for a period of time in code enforcement and building and safety. And we're projecting 2% to 5% increases in each of the divisions, planning, code enforcement, and building and safety due to, for next year's budget, due to salary adjustments and pension-related costs. Oops. Sorry.
That's yours? That's it? Wow. Any questions of Steve from the Planning Department? Greg? Kevin? Robin? Berwin? You're all free then. And now we're going to, is this back to Chad?
Uh, no. I'll handle the next two sections. There is no equipment replacement. Do we have equipment replacement?
Yes, we do. And this is just for memo only. This is indicating the vehicles anticipated to be purchased or proposed to be purchased in fiscal year 1819. These are the public work vehicles, and I don't know if Chad has any comments on these.
Just in general, I said, most of these have aged significantly, they're past the, multiple years past the projected replacement. And again, we try to burn everything to the ground before we replace it, but all these need to be replaced this year.
If I could also add to that, and that is, the monies that are needed to replace these vehicles have been set aside in the past, so they are not coming out of current year budget.
Is there any more?
Any questions on this slide?
I just have one. What do you anticipate revenue from the, because we're not going to keep them?
No, well, some of them will continue to use because they're not quite dead, but they're basically barely skimming it. Others will just obviously sell for, at an auction. As far as dollars, usually...
Hopefully, we'll get about 10% back on all that?
Yeah, if you're lucky.
All right.
It usually doesn't come out all that great for us, but yeah, we'll get something out of it.
Okay. Thank you.
And there are two vehicles from the Recreation Department proposed for purchase.
Just two items here. We have a Ford F-115 that's 16 years old and then has about 100,000 miles on it. And the other one is an patrol box for replacement. It's been set aside. Pardon me?
Any questions of staff? Go ahead, Kevin.
So is this, do we also have money put aside for this also, or is this coming out of this year's budget?
We have.
All right. And the city managers' proposed budget reductions?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, as you know, what we, based on the information that we've provided to you so far, the general fund is indicating a $1.9 million approximately deficit, and that is the difference between our projected revenues and expenditures. Part of what we have done here as staff is to go back and scrub the budget. I have been working with each department head to try to identify budget reductions that we can make to these numbers that are, that we have shared with you to try to reduce the amount of the projected deficit. As you know, one of the items before you tonight at your regular City Council agenda will be the passage of the city's appropriation limit for fiscal year 2018-2019. The purpose of that information is to set a limit of annual general fund expenditures. Based on that calculation, and the calculation is based on the demographics here in the city, the city population, the per capita income here in the city, and that appropriations limit is calculated at over $40 million. The recommended general fund is slightly over $21 million, so we are half of that. Obviously, that is an indication that the city's budget, we operate on a shoestring budget, and that has been the case for many years, and that's just the way Norco has been operating in the past. And for the most part, it's been working, and, but given the, again, the budget deficit we are looking at, we've looked at certain reductions that wanted, I want to share with the City Council. I have shared this with the department heads, and certainly, some of these proposed reductions have impact in terms of our financial planning ability to meet financial targets in the future. Some of them are items that impact operations in some way or the other. And that's why I'm recommending we explore these items together. And obviously, is, once I make this recommendation, it's up to the City Council to take some of them and, and all of them or to take none of them. But again, the idea behind this is to look at ways to reduce this projected deficit without significantly impacting operations in a negative way. So the first item that I have listed there is, as you know, part of our financial plan includes putting money away to fund our unfunded liability with respect to retiree medical. Over the years, since 2009, we have built a good amount of money in that fund, approximately eight, over $8 million as of March. eight, over $8 million as of March, uh, 2018, and part of how we have done that is to, uh, in addition to the initial money we, we put up, put out to establish the trust fund, is we've been contributing, uh, about $300,000 from the general fund every, every year. Uh, in some years, when budgets are tight, uh, we have not made that contribution. So, the budget that you're looking at, that is before you, includes $300,000 to be contributed to that fund from the general fund. With the projected deficit, uh, I'm recommending that we defer that contribution and not make that contribution for the coming fiscal year, and, uh, even though, uh, that would have an impact in terms of, uh, delaying the timing for us to meet our unfunded liability with respect to retiree medical, uh, I believe this impact will be minimal, uh, again, to the extent we continue to make progress, uh, from interest investment earnings, uh, based on the amount we have currently accumulated. So that is, uh, that item. The next item that I, I'm also recommending to the city council, uh, that would defer contribution towards equipment replacement. Again, as I stated to you earlier, uh, with those equipment, uh, purchases that are scheduled for, uh, this coming fiscal year, uh, the way we fund those replacement is to set money aside during the budget process every year into a, the equipment replacement fund, and from that fund, we, uh, pay for these equipment when they come due for replacement. Um, so they do have impact on current year budget by way of the amount we contribute. And again, this $91,000 will be the contribution, uh, for equipments that are funded by the general fund. We will continue to set money aside for those equipment to be replaced, to be replaced or funded by, uh, the water fund or the, uh, the sewer funds. So, again, uh, we'll just have to, again, um, where necessary, this would result into delaying the, 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 the replacement cycle. Um, instead of replacing them, uh, within six or seven years, again, we'll be replacing them within 11 years, similar to what you saw tonight. Um, so those are the first two items, and again, those, again, are financial planning issues, uh, uh, don't really have much impact as far as current operations are concerned. Uh, with, then we go into the departments. Uh, these are the recommendations I'm making to the city council in terms of, uh, ways to reduce the projected deficit. Uh, in the city manager's office, I'm recommending that, uh, um, all conferences and, and training, professional training, uh, be eliminated for next, uh, coming fiscal year. Um, the savings as a result, as a result of that, uh, would be $3,000, and, uh, it does have some small negative impact in terms of ability to keep, uh, keep up to speed in terms of developments in local government and some other professional, uh, developments in, in, in the practice of city government. Uh, the city clerk's office, uh, I'm recommending that vacant, uh, part-time position, uh, be, uh, eliminated from this budget. Uh, we created that, uh, position a year or so ago, and, uh, at this particular time, given our budget constraints, uh, I'm recommending that that, uh, position be eliminated. Uh, additionally, in that department, I'm also recommending that overnight training and conferences, uh, be eliminated, and that will provide a savings of, uh, about $17,000. Uh, the impact of that, uh, is that, uh, you know, uh, customer service request and the response, the response to residents, um, the timing for that, uh, may be delayed, um, but, uh, the idea is we will use what we have, uh, to try to, uh, manage that situation as best as we can. In human resources division, uh, again, I'm recommending that all training and, uh, professional, uh, seminars, uh, be eliminated for next year, and that provides a savings of, uh, $1,500. Uh, in the city attorney's office, uh, some parts of this is actually in code enforcement. I am recommending a reduction of $50,000. Primarily, I'm trying to look at, uh, different ways to manage, uh, code enforcement, uh, litigated cases, and, uh, I, I feel, um, perhaps I could, uh, utilize the services of the building official, as well as the fire inspector, uh, a little more, uh, in terms of trying to resolve, uh, issues, uh, before resulting to, uh, litigation. Uh, litigation oftentimes, sometimes are going to be necessary, uh, but I, I do want to, given again, our, uh, current budget situation, look at other ways, uh, to address most of those situations. And, uh, part of this also may involve, uh, potentially renegotiating the city attorney's contract, uh, but I believe if sufficient progress is made, uh, in code enforcement litigated claims, uh, or cases, that, uh, that will generate the $50,000 savings that I'm, I'm, I'm recommending. Uh, in fiscal and support services, I recommend a reduction of the budget by $20,000, and again, this involves reducing training, uh, training, uh, for staff, and, uh, additionally, uh, what, what we are planning to do here is to advance, uh, fund our business license, uh, software upgrade, um, so we will save money this current fiscal year and do that upgrade in fiscal year 1718, so that we don't have to do it, uh, in the next, uh, coming fiscal year. Recreation services, uh, this, all of these are Brian's area that, uh, he and I have worked quite a bit on this, and clearly, uh, most of these reductions will have impact on service levels, and, uh, but again, uh, these are necessary items we need to do in order to whittle down the projected deficit. So, in recreation services, um, the proposal is to reduce part-time staffing, eliminate conferences and training, uh, this obviously will have some negative impact. Um, part of those part-time reduction includes, uh, having less, less drivers, and that means, uh, the ability to deliver, uh, some packages and, uh, patrol the parks, uh, will be reduced. Additionally, one of the items we are proposing here is, if we do this, uh, part of the part-time staffing includes, um, resources that are needed to support the Parks and Recs Commission, rather than having the current monthly, uh, commission meetings, we'll be recommending that the meetings will be held every, every other month, um, so that's part of the savings that are factored into, into this recommendation. Park maintenance, uh, again, uh, a very big, uh, budget area here, and unfortunately, most of those, uh, costs are related to utilities and the contractual services, um, so what we are looking to do here is to reduce water usage, which has become a big chunk of the cost, uh, to maintain this, to operate this division, is to reduce, uh, water costs and also eliminate the basin park area maintenance. There is an area, uh, close to the hills out there, uh, that is currently maintained on a regular basis. Um, part of this recommendation would, uh, would eliminate that, and, uh, in lieu of that, we'll be using, uh, CDF staff to abet weeds on that, uh, in the basin area. Uh, senior citizens division, uh, recommendation is to eliminate the party partners program. Uh, in the last two years, we've been fortunate to have somebody step up and provide funding for this. Uh, this year, we do not have any commitment to do that, and, uh, eliminating that program as well as reducing utilities and supplies, uh, will generate a total savings of about $30,200. In the building maintenance division, uh, again, the idea is to reduce part-time staffing, uh, eliminate conferences and training, uh, reduce electricity charges, and, uh, reduce contractual services, uh, for janitorial services, um, we will have to manage our air-condition services, uh, so that, uh, we'll, we'll only do that work on, on as required basis. Uh, the same thing applies to animal control. We are recommending a reduction of $21,500, and, uh, that would include, uh, eliminating a part-time customer service clerk, and a reduction in the overtime budget. Um, reducing the overtime budget, uh, means that, uh, certain, uh, emergency, uh, callouts would not be attended to. Um, that is something that the superintendent would, would have to prioritize, uh, in terms of what we need to respond to on an emergency basis versus what we can do without. Economic development, we recommend a reduction of $15,000. Uh, the idea here is to eliminate travel and, uh, and related materials, and we will reduce supplies, uh, reduce historic resources consulting. Uh, similarly, in the planning department, uh, is to eliminate a part-time position, and eliminate training and, and, uh, travel. In the shelters department, uh, the impact of this I will leave up to the lieutenant to talk about, uh, because he and I have not actually, uh, had, uh, a good amount of discussion on this yet, but the recommendation is to def, not fund, uh, the community service office opposition, which is currently vacant, uh, and that will provide a savings of $132,000. And again, I want to acknowledge, first and foremost, that our, our public safety staff, staffing is certainly at minimal, minimal levels, but, uh, in the face of the budget deficit we are facing, uh, certain things have to be given up. And with that, I am available to answer any questions, so, also, staff.
Slam that in, I'll see you. Kevin?
Um, so, I'm, as always, concerned, but I'm, I'm good with the $300,000, I understand that. Ironically, we just came from a League of Cities meeting where we were totally ahead of everybody else, which means we have a little breathing space, correct?
Yeah, with respect to funding our retiree, uh, medical, uh, code, uh, we've made significant progress.
Right. You know, and just, just so, so people know, one of the things that comes out of going to SCAG and different things like that, the city of Norco is way ahead of other cities in a lot of ways. The understanding of this, I mean, we sit in rooms with, no offense to any council people in other cities, but they don't even know what an unfunded liability is yet, and yet, we have been preparing for this for 10 years, 15 years. So I'm good with that. Um, defer the vehicle maintenance replacement, I'm good with. City manager, you know, I guess, Andy, if any other city manager was sitting there, I'd be nervous about this, but I'm confident that you will continue to stay ahead of things. Yeah, that's a question.
Yeah, that is, absolutely, I would do what I need to do.
All right, I just, just, all right, so I'm good with that. Uh, the city clerk, the elimination of the part-time position, uh, I'm sorry, Cheryl, uh, I feel badly about this, but we haven't had that person for several weeks, correct? Months?
Four.
Right. Um, human resources overnight travel, will Myrna be able to stay abreast of the things she needs to stay abreast of?
All the resources available, they have, just have to work a little harder.
Okay. Um, city attorney, uh, you want to eliminate that position altogether?
That's not my call.
Just kidding. My concern about that is, is I remember the day when the fire chief and one person sat in the office and they sent letters and nobody did anything. I'm willing to try this right now, but I don't want to go back to those days when I first got on council and we essentially had no code enforcement whatsoever. Terms of the city attorney, I, I heard you say, we might want to reduce or renegotiate that contract, given what Sacramento is about ready to inflict on us. I'm very concerned that we would not have adequate, we need to have a city attorney. I don't, I hope we can get it out to residents. Sacramento is about ready to drop bombs on us, and so I'm concerned about that. Fiscal and support services, I, I guess I'm okay with that. Recreation services, I get the PT staffing, can you really reduce the water, like, like we're talking about there, Brian?
In the parks budget, we're, we're recommending a 17 to 18% bud, uh, budget reduction in water. It means we're going to really have to monitor it close, and we may have to add a little as we go, but, uh, when, depending on the weather. And, uh, but, working with our, our landscape contractor, we feel we can manage this, but it's going to be a challenge throughout the fiscal year, but we believe we can do it.
Okay. Uh, party partners, man, that's, that's a tough one. Have we made any effort at all to try to get somebody to cover that?
As you know, um, we used to receive CDBG funding for this, and then, um, that funding dried up, and, and the portion, remember, part of the portion of this, or a larger portion than what we, our contribution was, was from Corona. Corona decided to reevaluate how it defers its CDBG funds.
Right.
So we lost that, and then we received a, a grant, basically, from, uh, a living fund from the church, and that covered us. Um, that is no longer available to us. Based on trying to meet the reduction or making some reductions, this program is made up of more non-residents than it is residents. It's a great program, I, not to just, didn't dilute that at all, but if I have to do something, I would rather look at doing that than trying to touch my transportation program, which benefits local residents, the military, and the handicapped in the community, which is about all I would have, no other option to do, is to look at that for reduction. So this seems like the most prudent thing to do.
No offense to the true believer, but you'll notice that's $30,000. Please let him know that this program will be defunded. Um, maybe we can try to find somebody that, I'm referring to an attorney that's in the neighborhood. So just think about it. Um, but I would like to try to, maybe I can make some calls. Maybe, can we call Daryl Talbert and see if they will maybe come back to the table? It's an election year.
Okay, yeah, um, budget situation.
I don't care. You know, $30,000, given the sea of debt they have, it's nothing. Um, building maintenance, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that. Animal control, if we have to do it, we already get complaints that, uh, there's not enough emergency response stuff. Economic development, um, you know, Bill, Bill, does that mean you're going to eliminate Bill completely?
Not really. Uh, I think we can suddenly scale back in the, I'm not sure. I know, I'm not saying we haven't done that in the past, uh, clearly, the year before with all this current fiscal year because of, uh, combination to the national register and some of the activities related to that, uh, we, uh, we increased the budget, it's been scaled back, but I, I think we can, uh, further do some additional reductions here.
I, I would, I would actually like to challenge the commission, no, no historic component in any city does well when the city is totally funding it, and one of the things that the commission really needs to look at is actively going out themselves and trying to find ways to fund historic preservation, and, you know, maybe I'll come and talk to them about that, maybe we can connect with the different organizations, but I think that that's something that we've talked about before, and has to happen, and that commission maybe needs to take a more active role in finding funding sources to perpetuate that forward. And then, in terms of planning, I guess I don't really, where do you guys travel to? Trandy training?
There are seminars that are put on by American Planning Association that has, has funding permits, and we have time, we attend, and it gives us legislative updates on new laws.
They teach you how to measure buildings?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. Uh, I'm good with this budget, um, Andy, thank you very much. Sorry to take so much time, I wanted to go through it.
Great.
I guess I'll start at the very bottom, on, um, defunding the CSO, as, um, I certainly realize the, public safety is number one. The, um, additional traffic deputy that we were funding, right now, I'm assuming that is still in.
It's still in.
And the position is still vacant. What is the cost of that?
Uh, the CSO, uh, the, is about $346,000.
What we have for, good evening, council member, what we have for the dedicated traffic position is 39, 338-966.
Yeah, somewhere around there.
And that we can fund July 1st for the next fiscal.
And would we be able to fill the position on July 1st?
Yes.
Okay. And then, but right now, we're, we're backfilling with our, um, like, special traffic enforcement and the grants?
We're fortunate that we have the OTS grant, but also this- We're fortunate that we have the OTS grant, but also this city's been very supportive in our traffic enforcement efforts and provided us with a budget to work from. And an example of that enforcement occurred earlier this week where we had those citations that we issued along the Hamner Corridor. So we do have that, we've utilized that, and we have been somewhat effective. There will be more information I'll have tonight during the annual report to city council that will cover some of those things in more detail.
And I guess, Andy, on that note, we're backfilling what approximately $100,000 a year along with the grants for this special traffic enforcement?
That's about correct, yes. Again, the lieutenant will tell you part of the issue where the overtime process is lack of consistency as far as traffic, being able to enforce traffic on a regular basis. Having someone who knows the city, that understands the traffic patterns here in the city and can use that to enforce the traffic. And also, there are times when sheriff's staff is not available to fill in for an overtime business. So that is why, again, we have, why we have recommended in the past and the city council did concord to go ahead and provide a permanent dedicated traffic deputy.
I don't know, that, this is hard for me because I certainly support public safety, but $338,000 at this point in time to concentrate on traffic enforcement, that may be an amount that I think we need to look at, knowing that we still have the opportunity to fill the special traffic enforcement with various times, as you just mentioned, along with the grants. Can you give me some pros and cons on, I mean, that's a big chunk of money.
I understand. I don't know of many agencies that don't have a dedicated traffic team, and the demand for traffic enforcement is increasing day by day. And we're getting a lot of citizens that are complaining that there is not enough or very little traffic enforcement within their neighborhoods. And so we do the best we can. Obviously, we're staffing probably about, I think it comes down to roughly four to five days a week in their six-hour slots. So that's not full-time traffic enforcement. Now, the dedicated position wouldn't be full-time traffic enforcement either because, you know, we're not capable of working a one person 24/7, obviously.
Right.
And that's where we would use the OTS grant and some of the city funding to supplement that, but it makes it difficult to be consistent, and that's what we look for. We look for our traffic enforcement deputies to have a community appeal, to be dedicated to serving the community. People have a name and a face that they can identify with and they understand that they're trying to tackle their enforcement issues within their neighborhoods. And something just bleeding off into this as well as the CSO position, our set team, our special enforcement team deputies are a unique team with a very, very specialized and specific skill asset. They are a tool. And they get tasked with running the grants, they get tasked with the traffic enforcement, they get tasked with a number of things, attending meetings, event planning, and that's taking them out of their ability to fight crime and tackle some of the crime issues that we have in Norco. We've had two very recent, very, very wide encompassing investigations that could have turned badly. Had it not been for their skill asset, for their ability to get in at the very early stages within these investigations, the outcome could have been different. I would like to keep our set team on the streets, fighting crime as much as possible time-wise, so that dedicated traffic enforcement deputy would be taking a lot of that workload off the set team deputies who manage our OTS grant as well as the CSO position, handling some of the staffing concerns, attending the community meetings on their behalf, so that we can keep them available, we can keep them fighting crimes and handling those complex investigations. So overall, we're trying to keep, there's been a lot of demands, and this is part of what I'll deliver tonight, and I certainly understand that each department has their challenges. I get that. And we do the best we can with what we have, but we really need to look at is our ability to have an impact in fighting crime. And so our set team, like I said, has had major impact recently with at least two large-scale investigations, if not more, with their abilities. And we need to keep them available to fight crime. And I'm just looking at ways to lessen their workload so that they're more available to the community and the city in addressing those issues. They also address a number of quality of life issues, too, and that's something that we could push off onto our dedicated traffic enforcement, who would be overseeing the grant, the traffic grant and all the traffic issues in Norco. So we're freeing up the set deputies there. And then the CSO position, the administrative issues that they are faced with, the meetings, the planning meetings, the event meetings, the scheduling, the maintenance that they're required to do, all of those things would be pushed onto the CSO, so we would have our set team available to deal with these issues and these large-scale investigations. And that's essentially what I'm trying to do, or drill down to, is keeping them available to do their investigations.
So Eric, would you say that perhaps we shouldn't defund the vacancy CSO position? Would you make that same case?
Well, again, in...
For the needs that we have.
For the needs of the department, the staffing level in this office, this Norco sheriff's office has not grown in at least, I would say, a decade. And the demand for our services are growing, our calls for service grow every year. We see an increase, and that's part of what I'm going to deliver tonight with our annual report. The demands upon our small station here and our staffing is great. And this is what I brought up at strategic planning, is we have to have the ability to be effective, and we want to be able to not just respond in a response mode, we want the ability to be out there actively investigating before those crimes occur, and that's where our set team really excels. They really excel in preventing crime, crime prevention, and identifying the crime trends we have as part of the crime analyst reports that we review every two weeks. Those two deputies are responsible, fortunately, and it's no surprise, our crime was down last year, which is significant with all the challenges we faced, and that is due to what those two gentlemen have done. So my, in my department, in my world, I'm looking to bounce everything out but to remain effective, so we're not just in a response mode. And so my recommendation have, in my conversations with the city manager, has been to expand and get a small foothold when we can, so when we have the available funding, we start expanding this small sheriff's office, which hasn't seen an increase in staffing in a very, very long time. That's it in a nutshell.
Thanks, Eric. Kind of going up on the list, city attorney. I can see this to a point. Andy, I don't want to impact our going after code enforcement cases with this. Is this money out of city attorney or also including our outside attorneys?
Combination.
And so it's a combination of? Okay. I think generally, overall, I have concerns about eliminating part-time positions. Steve, how many people in your department? Two full-time, one part-time?
We've got...
I mean, planning, not building safety.
Oh, just in planning, we have a vacant part-time, no, no, it's not vacant, we have one part-time person, two full-time.
You and Alma and a part-time.
Right.
And I think, you know, with our planning department right now, it's barely keeping their head above water at times, and to eliminate that part-time position may not be prudent. I think the same goes for parks, that we actually need more staff, and I think we put a lot on the burden on the backs of the part-timers. Maybe there's a way that you don't cut it out completely, but we use part-time in maybe a more limited way, you know, as needed. City clerk's office. I think if any department, all departments need more help, but you got two people in the city clerk's office, and they're working until the middle of the night. I think to eliminate a part-time position with all the demands that come forward with ballot initiatives, you know, and an election coming up, I don't think that's the prudent move at this time. So we'll have more opportunity, Andy, to go through this individually. We don't have to make decisions tonight on this.
Actually, it will be helpful because at some point we have to finalize the budget.
Okay.
I'm going to try to get to the other ones we can, so we can get...
Sure, go ahead.
This is the time. Robin?
I had a question for Brian on building maintenance. You talk about reducing electricity contractual services for the janitorial air conditioning. So are you proposing that we just stop having events at Nellie Weaver Hall or what's that?
No. What we do on the, in regards to the 737, obviously, we're cutting our training except for those, the training requirements that are required for that position for certifications. The next thing we're doing is we're reducing our utilities. So we're adjusting all of our utilities to be more cost-effective and locking out the utilities to try and save energy. The other item that we're going to be looking at doing is in our contracts for janitorial services, which is a big part of the building and 737 building and maintenance, is we're going to go back and renegotiate. For example, this proposal, instead of seven days a week, the sheriffs will be put on four days a week for maintenance, for janitorial services. Said janitorial services will reduce citywide and buildings adjustments. Staff will empty their own trash cans into a larger trash can pool. It will require all of those type of things in order to make these reductions.
Okay, so they're across the board in every single building, not just one?
Right. And then there is one, we're doing, and then in this year's proposed budget, we also had $25,000 to decide for capital outlay for footing. That will be deferred. So we're pushing that out into another fiscal year to take a look at it again. And that's 25,000. So when you look at all of those, that's how I arrived at those particular numbers to get to that number. It's primarily contract services, utilities, and one capital outlay item.
Now, when you talk about locking out utilities...
Right now, our thermostats are open to every department to adjust as they want to do. Can I lock them out? Absolutely.
We're locked out at work, so I get that.
And we said it, we would be setting these at 76 degrees, although we have some places where people like it at 69, 70, or whatever. However, in talking with the city manager, we can lock those out and set it at what the state requires is, say, 76 degrees. That's the state's recommendation.
All right, thank you. The only other thing I'd mention is...
Just one more thing, and then we're going to lock out weekends. Unless there is a specific request, there will be no ACs working in any public facilities unless, example, sheriff's department, fire department would be a difference. But unless that room is not used, if you walk into city hall, there'll be no ACs on in city hall on weekends.
That makes perfect sense to me, the school district did that years ago. So I guess the only other thing that I'd like to mention is that I'm kind of with Greg on the part-time stuff. We're running with barely any staff as it is, and, you know, we need to be able to function, and taking off some of those part-time people is going to make it really hard on the staff that we have here. And I'd like to keep the staff that we have and not get them to the end of the rope where they're so frazzled they just want to walk away because they can't do their job effectively. So having that help for them, in my opinion, is really important.
That's it. Robin, I mean, Berwin?
Thank you. Yeah, I have a, I have a problem with cutting anything in the way of public safety in the sheriff's department because I know for a fact what Eric's talking about, about the set team, how good they work and everything, because I went in and reported and talked to the sergeants about a couple of crime spots over here in town, and they had it all solved in about three days. And I mean, it was like, they got on it and they did a good job with it and everything. And I hate to see those guys be impacted by not having enough help in the department that they can't go do their job. And also with the city clerk's department, like Greg said, they work 20 hours a day. One of them barely has time to get home and then kind of turn around and come back. I hate to see them lose their part-time, and especially with election coming up, because I know the last two elections, how much time, and I call it a waste of time, that some people in the public put on our city clerk to get information in there, because I remember one time we were at a League of City meetings and Cheryl had been here all day dealing with one of those people, getting information, and I hate to see them be impacted. But on animal control, Brian, excuse me, what does this mean that certain emergency response calls will not be attended to? Tell me what, in a way, what you mean by...
For right now, when we receive an after-hours call, we will only respond to poisonous snakes, loose livestock, all animal bites, because we have to do that, that's state law, injured animals, and fire and police directives, meaning when the sheriff's department calls, the fire department calls, we'll respond. But what we'll be doing is screening those a lot more intensely, particularly on the injured animal situation. We get a lot of calls through dispatch for injured animals. We get out there, there is no injured animal, number two. The animal is not there, it's actually been an animal that's been deceased for days, but they say it's injured. So we're going to have to screen those calls, and one way of doing that is that we need a call back from somebody, in other words. So it's going to take some more screening from our after-hours people, but that way we can curtail some of that, hopefully curtail some of the overtime that would occur on that.
Well, I know a few years ago, when the budget went south, that Charles and Frankie were calling, NART guys calling us at night to go help them out with loose livestock. That way, only one of them had to be out, and there's three or four of us, which we don't mind doing, you know, the way of horses or cattle, I don't want to have to go take a shovel and scrape a sale cat off the road, but...
The number of calls we get during the week like that, we'd probably be calling NARTU all the time, probably every other night about 3 o'clock in the morning.
Hey, we've been there many a time, I'll tell you.
No, I don't think that's going to change. That relationship is there, it's been built upon, it works. We know that we have limited resources. So in certain situations, we're going to have to call NART on certain calls that are not going to be that real easy one. When I have, and we've had situations where we've got steers running loose in a neighborhood, that's going to take not one officer, but it's going to take NART as well, and probably fire department.
Yeah, and as far as an injured animal, I know what you're talking about on that because the dog may get hit and lay there for a little bit, and then he comes to and he disappears and they can't find him and everything, so I can see why you'd need to have a second call on that.
And our, by, and if we have a call, it's a minimum of two hours. So even if the officer gets there, let's say they get there within 15 minutes of the call, they're paid for two hours even if there's nothing there.
Right. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Berwin. I'm going to go back to the sheriff's thing. In January 2017, this council agreed to fund the traffic deputy in the CSO. Part of that comment at that time was to make sure it was going to be sustainable. We can't go backwards, and I know we're in a deficit, but we can't go backwards. I mean, it's, we have a need, and so, you know, I'm like Greg. The traffic deputy is important. We need that traffic deputy in this town. And a good CSO, too, is worth their weight in gold for what we pay them. I've seen them in action, and they take a lot of pressure, and you train them right, and they will take the pressure off of the cops guys so that they can actually do their job. A good CSO, too, is a good neighborhood... A good CSO, too, is a good neighborhood watch officer, a good statistician. Not only that, but she or he or she can transport prisoners, so they're valuable. And I know, Andy, you've done a good job in trying to eliminate things along with your department ads. I don't have, you know, I hate to see party partners go, but if it's not something that we can fund, yes, then you'd rather it. The basin park, that's always been a contention of mine, is why it's yours anyway, and why even opening it up for a basin park. It's a storm drain. Somebody got the idea of having that big thing there, we'll get a bunch of sand in there, and we're going to run the horses in there. You know what? That's a neighborhood park. Should have never been a city park. Actually, it should be a public works problem, but it doesn't, it's just shifting the expense somewhere else. If you ask the residents over there, they can maintain that park. I'll go down there and maintain that park. I'll turn the ground over. But the thing is with the basin, and here's the thing, you're talking about cutting the water, are you just cutting the water that's citywide, Brian?
We'll be reducing there. There, we would turn the water off.
Okay. And there's not that, it's going to, what, just sprinklers?
What you have, you have a lot of vegetation, acacia on the hill.
So, okay, so that's all going to die off?
I would use CDF to go through and do some weed abatement a couple of times a year, and that would be it. We will still maintain the trail from the lower end to the upper end.
Okay, so you're going to cut the water off on all that acacia. So now, I'll go back to Scott. We now have dried brush, so we have a fire danger, so do we just remove all the acacia?
I'd leave the acacia because I think it helps, even if it dies off, it's going to still maintain and help support that slope that's in there.
So we've got to catch 22. We create a fire danger, are we going to, are we, that's close to my house. I don't want a hill, the fire going up on my hill, okay? So I'm being selfish on that aspect of it. I'm here, like most of you, and I work and I volunteer in the city. I hate to see these part-time positions being cut back because I see the work they do. And for those who don't, the city clerk is here, probably 16-hour days and not longer, and she doesn't charge us for it. I don't have a problem with delaying the replacement of the vehicles, even though it may cost us a little bit for that $91,000. But we just went to that League of City meeting on Monday night, and Andy, if we kick the can down the road again, next year, it's going to be higher. I know you're looking at cost savings, that $300,000, but I'd like to revisit that right now at a mid-budget level to see where we're at before we eliminate it from this year. And that would be the same thing on the part, the clerks and that, revisit that. It's a vacant position now, but I think we need to do a mid-year review on that, see if we can, if it's really going to hurt us that much. And that's along with the, even the city attorney. This city for so long went through without a code enforcement. We finally have a code enforcement. We're finally cleaning up junk and messes and dilapidated buildings. And if we don't have a strong code enforcement, it's going to continue. We're going to go back where we were 10 years ago. We can't afford that because then we're going to play catch-up. You know, that's, we've got our nearly $10 million in reserve. After this year, we will have. But it's going to be--
It's going down.
It's going down, and I understand that. But the residents have, and I think the residents do understand that, but we owe it to them. We can cut some of these programs, and we'll, and I know we're going to talk about them more, but we're cutting $831,000 out of this total thing. I can't see it at this point. We're doing what we're doing. I'm looking at Roger, we're actually getting economic development. Do we have to go to ISIS every year? No. But for the last couple of years, we've gotten a lot of good contacts there, and that's a good thing. It brings, brings those economic drivers here. You just have to think differently. Just can't cut, cut, cut. And, you know, it's one of those things the residents are going to say, well, why don't we have this? Because we can't afford it. But if you look at, and you guys have been here mostly, you work here in the city, or you've been associated with the city, we're down to bare bones as it is. So I'd like to, we have a direction, Andy, if we can, and you're looking for a direction on this, if possible, I know you work with, if there's a way that you could sit with two of us at a time and we could go with, through this before we have to sit and meet in June, so that you get a feel from each, from two councilmen, without violating the Brown Act, so we could sit down with them and see where each council person is on this, if my fellow council is willing to go for this and look at it rather than sitting on the dais and talking about it, because we want to continue this meeting on.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Andy.
I just wanted to make sure that the city, I don't think it's a legal issue there in terms of, from a legal standpoint, but I would want the city attorney to weigh in on what I asked, appropriate way to handle this.
Sure, I mean, there's, there's no, I mean, obviously, you can't make a decision. All you can receive is input, but meeting with two council members, as long as it's not a majority, is fine.
I mean, that's, if the rest of the council members would look, do that on a one-on-one rather than taking up workshop time.
I just got one more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Berwin.
I'll agree with you on that code enforcement thing. I think hiring that lady part-time on the weekends has been a real good deal, because I know there's just been this code problem forever, and Javier's been working on it, and now she's over there with him and everything. And I noticed this week that the people actually have been in there loading it, and they quit setting it out on the ride away. So I agree, we need to keep that code enforcement going.
Go ahead, Greg.
And I certainly support the idea of one or two of us meeting with the city manager, but Brian, do you have numbers, when you're talking about, you know, locking out the air conditioning and setting it 76 degrees or whatever, do you have projected savings for electricity?
Yes, I do. I'll give you just a second here. Just in the 737, it's about $7,000 reduction annually.
And the reason I'm saying this, in new construction with Title 24--
Yeah.
--that you have to have, like all your light switches, their movement, right? So you're sitting, working at your desk, and your lights go off after a certain amount of time. So what most people do is bring fans, okay, and set the fan to blow by the light switch so the lights stay on. And I'm serious about this, and because you see it, that you're not really saving anything. So, I mean, I agree with you in a sense about, you know, locking thermostats and things like that, but then I look at our staff and I say, well, okay, so we're going to take away your part-time help, we want you to work harder, longer than you're doing now, and now we're going to let you work in a warmer environment. And so when everybody starts bringing in fans, okay, because it's too damn hot, I think we need to think that out a little bit. As far as having Cal Fire and the sheriff empty their own garbage cans, I'm fine with that, okay? So, but I think we ought to look at a, at a comfort level that kind of makes some common sense with the cost savings.
One of our problems is, and obviously, from the capital side, and someday, maybe in the future, there's capital money, that would make a huge difference, because right now, what we're working on are units that are 30 years plus. And efficiency, amount of production, all of those things, Title 24, we don't meet that in very many locations until we can convert over at a time. So those things would play a role in a capital program in the future. But when we did the numbers to try and reduce utilities, we estimated, based on some of the calculations we did, approximately $7,000. It could be a little bit more. When we could do stuff for the weekends and things like that when no one's there, and by the way, air conditions are working on the weekends and that type of thing. We can adjust some stuff that maybe helps us a little bit, but, you know, if I did that and left it running, then I'm going to still, we could still make some, I think, reductions here that would help the bottom line a little bit, but, you know.
Right, right. And then have, and maybe adjust the thermostats that they turn off at a certain time. Part of myself, my problem infrastructurally is that our systems are so old to even meet demand that it's a challenge, and that's why they have to run harder.
Well, no, I'm going to, because I want to have some public comment. One of the things, and I'm just, I went through the, my fellow council people to sit up here, June 6, and perhaps we have continued this workshop, because this was just thrown at us on this fiscal year 2018, 19, city manager proposed budget reductions. If you don't mind, I'd like to schedule a workshop on June 6 prior to that council meeting, if we can, so we can discuss this a little bit more fuller rather than the one-on-one with the city manager, if that's agreeable. Think about it here, because I'd like to get the public involved before we, we're going to run out of time before we have to go to a closed session. So are there any public comments on this?
No cards.
No cards at all? I'm going to ask, and I rarely do this, because a lot of things came up, especially with this, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais. Andy, you want to finish this up on the general fund, please?
If you don't, if you don't think there's enough time to complete what you need on this one--
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Excuse me, but you did have one resident raise his hand.
Oh, I didn't see it, I'm sorry. Pat? I'm sorry, I didn't see it, Pat. Come on, Pat, come on up here. Come off the podium, because you got to say, because Cheryl has it, and otherwise, it won't record. Thank you.
Is this thing on?
It's on.
Okay. So I think everything that you guys are saying is right, and you should have the June 2 meeting, and we also meet with the city manager to get opinions of each of the folks, so you won't violate the Brown Act. But I think that there's some heavy thought that needs to go into some of these, some of these budget cuts that maybe can be substituted in the future, so. But I think for you guys to participate would be a good thing, to do that.
Thank you, Pat.
Welcome.
All right, now we're bringing back the dais. Andy?
Okay, just to make sure how we proceed, we have two options, Mr. Mayor. We can finish, wrap up the presentation on the general fund and then continue with whatever we need to catch up with on June 6 today, so we can finish the presentation as we have it on the general fund, or we can jump now into the CIP and finish the presentation on the general fund on June 6. The remaining presentation item is really a presentation designed to provide answer or answers to a question that was raised by council member Bash at the last city council study session. It was an important question that I thought requires some explanation in the form of presentation, so. And his question was, why has our budget gone from $13 million in 2012, 2013 to where we are today? And so we did look at those numbers and have some explanations to share with respect to that. So we can either do that or jump into the CIP at the preference of the council.
Do you think that the CIP, we can get it done in 30 minutes?
It's possible.
As shaking, as how you can. And if, and yours is really small. If my fellow council people agree, we'll just do the CIP and bring the other, continue with the general fund budget, so we can get a good discussion next on June 6? See Greg shaking his head, yes. Kevin, yes? Robin, good?
I won't be here.
Yeah, that's right, you're going to, you're going to trust us?
So you want to--
But you'll be able to do, but we don't accept the budget until the following, okay. Berwin, you good with that?
Yeah, numbers are numbers. It's a matter of judgment.
Okay, all right, let's go with the CIP chat.
This guy!
All right, Andy, you got it.
I'm going to turn it over to Chad.
Okay. Is that in this book?
Presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the staff, and we'll be going back and forth between Brian and myself as far as to identify the capital projects as the slides come up, but this is the five-year projection for fiscal years 19 to 23 for parks and public works and fire. And we'll jump in here real quick. And please, if you have any questions on any particular side, as we talk about projects, jump in there.
I will wait till the end, so we can get your presentation.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about the budget. The first slide, which is page four in your book, is just the summary of all the different funds as far as the projects, existing balances as of July 1, 2018. We have about $23 million in available funds for various, for the various departments. Again, expected expenditures, we're expecting about $29,000, you know, $29 million, excuse me, in total work, estimated expenditures and transfers for the year, with an ending balance after 2019 in June, about $10 million. We'll go into each of those individual funds. The first one is the fire department. There's only one item we're funding in this one, which is the emergency vehicle preemption, the EVP. This actual number will change. Unfortunately, I found out today that our vendor, that we, where the council already approved to do the new street signs on Sixth Street and the EVP improvements, the equipment's not going to be available till June, so I won't actually get it built and all that done in this fiscal year. So I'm going to carry those funds and add on to this number here. This number, $72,000, was to do Hamner, which is our second phase of the project. So this number will change to about $110,000 when we do the next budget approval, so you'll see that number will change. But I want you to know now that that, previously approved about $33,000 for the EVP on Sixth Street, that's now going to be added into this, this next fiscal year's budget. But again, that equipment is already ordered, it's just delayed till July. But that number will change to reflect both those projects' costs. And that $72,000, what I project we need for EVP based off of my consultant and identifying what we do have, what we don't, and doing each intersection on Hamner. Okay, so successor agency?
I'll take it. This is the remaining balance to the successor agency funds of $319,335. As you know, the successor agency will demise at the end of July. This is the balance being moved forward. We've identified some projects in here for council's review, and then we will bring those projects to the successor's agency or, and for discussion before, sometime here between now and June, and discuss those particular projects for approval. But this is the remaining balance that's in that fund. This particular slide is our general government project fund, 140. We have a $528,000, there's development, the funds that are identified in here are revenues are from development impact fees and also transfer from the successor agency funds are transferred over here. Particular projects that are identified, one project the staff has identified for council is to take a look at the landscaping along River Road. This is across from the Lewis Development of landscaping that particular area. One of the comments that came back in is, from the community in that particular area was to do a planting pallet that would include large trees to help shield noise and light pollution from the development. Our landscape contractor came up with a design that would do that. This particular fund, the funding here identified-- This particular fund, the funding here identified would take care of that, that would replant that whole slope, provide evergreens and other types of trees that would actually help with the reduction of noise and of also light in that particular area. The other project here is City Hall parking lot, that is out to bid. We'll be bringing that back to you for a word of contract here in June, and we will do it. Now, there's two parts to this project. We, as we worked on this project, we were also working with the school district. What we found is the school district has some greater issues with drainage. And for them to get through the particular engineering issues, we've given them our information, they're gonna move forward. So we split the projects apart. We'll move forward with our project, they're, they're gonna go forward with theirs. It's gonna take a little bit more work on their end, because some of the issues they have on their side are really related to how they're gonna take water and get it into storm drain, so. The other item here is I have City Hall sheriff substation improvements. This includes the security improvements, our sheriff's substation, it's, the security, our cameras, all of the various software and hardware is needed, it is outdated, needs an update. So this would include that security, it also included an update in the security at City Hall and expansion, including cameras. And our current security server is at the point where it needs to be replaced. So, this, this also includes some improvements, which includes painting City Hall and also fixing the City Hall sign out in front and doing some landscaping. So, that, this particular line item would include all of the above. Playground equipment in Neil Snipes will be coming next council meeting, work contract on this, and that's where all of these funds have been identified for the 140 project fund. Any questions? Not, I'll move to...
In understanding the need, but I received enough resident comments when Public Works at Fift and Valley View, when your parking lot was repaved, that why, from various residents, why are they driving on the quality of the streets we have, but Public Works gets a brand-new parking lot? And I understand the need, that somewhat concerns me on perception that City Hall parking lot and, I'm sure we can spend $138,000 on someone's street to rehab before we do our own parking lot. And we don't need to get into a further discussion, I've, I've just, that strikes me as an objection right now.
Go ahead, Kevin.
What's the status of Neil Snipes in terms of swapping that land? Anything going on?
Not, we can't really start the process until we have a proposal, a development proposal.
So you can't just, you can't say, okay, we're gonna move our park from here to here?
Um, no, the, my discussions with the Department of the Interior suggest that they won't consider it until we have an actual development proposal, which is the, deforms the rational basis for actually making the swap.
Yeah, I guess I have a concern putting in the playground equipment. As much as I know that park is used, we have a lot of parks with a lot of equipment, and I just have a concern about that.
If we don't, we'll need to do, if we do a few modifications, we're gonna have to remove it.
Right, I understand.
That'll be the next step.
I understand, I understand.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Brian.
The next is the 141, the park improvement funds. In these particular project areas, we have about $20,000 in park improvements for Ingles. The Nellie Weaver Hall project is, we've, we've received all of our engineering Title 24 documents, that is just being finished up to being, going out to bid. And also our roofing specs and everything have been completed, and we've completed for, a portion of that bid as well. So that's moving quite, right along. And included in the Title 24, one of the things that came back from the engineering, the mechanical engineer, was is that we're going to have to actually reshoot our insulation in that roof to get our Title 24 mark, temperatures. I feel that I have enough in the budget to accomplish that goal based on what we're, our estimates are coming in at. Right now, because the heat rises to keep it cooling down and get the temperature, if you, Nellie Weaver Hall is pretty much a metal structure, but we have insulated the, the upper. It's been a long time since that insulation's been done, so it needs to have a makeover. That will help us in meeting our requirements. And the public arts, Ingles, public art is completed, but also included in this particular part of the project is landscaping, signage, and also planting of trees and irrigation. So, what we're looking at here is, we have a meeting with our park development committee next week, and we're gonna be earmarking and prioritizing that, what funds are left in that particular category as we move into next fiscal year. And as you know, you see in the Wayne making electrical backbone project, switchgear, we are at the conclusion of that project, completing punch list, and we're about ready to close that project out and bring back notice of completion. Any questions?
Just Brian, real quick, on that, on Nellie Weaver Hall, on your AC units and that, you said your engineer recommended an R24?
R30.
Oh, okay. So, let's you and I get together, because there's a, there's a different process that's been developed where you can, that's cost-effective to achieving R38 in a steel building.
Love that idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have the, Greg?
And obviously this shows where the funding transfer is for under facility improvements, which includes the replacement of the, this, I'm sorry, this one is, we've added a little money in here as our system is sold, particularly at City Hall, we're replacing, this has the ability to place two small units or one larger unit, 10-ton unit, so we'll be actually replacing one of the AC units here at City Hall with this. Next. And then we're moving to public works.
Storm drain?
So we're going to storm drain discussion, so I just want to highlight, we did complete two storm drain projects this year, they are done. We have, currently in this proposal, we have 10 total projects. Seven of them are already designed, three of them are already out to bid, the rest should be out to bid of those seven in the next month. So we're finally getting caught up with, this year we did a lot of design work on, on many different levels, streets and storm drains and water projects. So, we're gonna have a lot of work during the summertime leading into the winter, so we're finally getting movement on some of these projects. Three of the projects are new, and they're also category one projects that normally be done by flood control, but they've given us permission to do them, so we can help do some mitigations in some important areas. One of those areas is on Valley View, between Fourth and all the way down to Third, that's an area that gets quite flooded, so we're putting a line in there, and we'll do that design in this year and hopefully get it done, so we can actually get it under construction. But that's a big, helpful project that will benefit several residents. So, and then another one is just, we have to, by NPDS rules, now we have to start putting screens on our catch basins, so Flood Control's agreed to fund 50% of that project. It's a, it's a test project, they're less, they're basically doing $50,000, 25 is ours, 50 is theirs, or 25 is theirs, 25 is ours, and we'll do as many as we can as a test, and if it turns out to be effective, and they'll continue that funding in future years. But we're obligated now to put catch screens on all our catch basins in the city, or we face significant fines from the state. So that's part of this process we talked about earlier with NPDS, and making sure we're in compliance. So this is starting that process, and it's about a five-year process, where they finally will start saying, if you're not complete, you will be fined.
Chad, does the placement of those catch drains or storm drain basin screens, is that gonna, how, you've already reflected that impacting your general fund for your staff? Somebody's gotta clean them.
Well, that's what will be, part of that process is, yes, it, once they're in, we down, we need to clean them, and that'll be part of the evaluation, how much that'll cost us.
All right, thank you.
Yes, that's an obvious thing we have to take care of, yep. Good point, good point out. So, we'll go to Measure A. So on this, again, we have 15 active projects for this next fiscal year. I do want to highlight that seven of them are already awarded, that you ordered last council meeting, and those will be under construction probably in June, so that's a good thing. We have four that are currently out to bid, and we have four more in, in design or almost done. So, again, a lot of design work that was done this year, we're actually catching up and doing a lot of the construction, so a lot of, again, most of these things, if not all of them, will certainly be done in this fiscal year, which will cover a lot of streets. And this is only the Measure A fund, we still have the gas tax fund of streets to show too, but, so all these streets that have, just to point out the project number, those are funded for this year, those will be done in this fiscal year. One of the things we're also doing to highlight, and it's on page two, and it's an important one, is we're going to start doing a lot more slurry seal. And I'm actually dedicating over $600,000 for slurry seal, because that's what's gonna help preserve our good streets longer. We have neglected our good streets to the point where then they become grinding overlays, which are far more expensive. So we're gonna take an active role, and we're focusing under this slurry seal on here, the 300,000 plus another 300,000 I have in, in, in 140, count 149, we're gonna do all the streets up in the LMDs and the hills. So all those will be slurry sealed, and that is already under design, they'll likely go out and be awarded in probably July, I guess, probably earliest, so that it gets done in the summertime. That's key for us to do that in the summertime. And, so potentially that will be done before, hopefully, the school starts. But all the LMDs will get slurry sealed, that'll give us another five to 10 years, good easy life on those roads before we get to the point where we're getting the cracks and having a crack seal, et cetera. So, this is good preventive maintenance, and then I'm highlighting, I'm gonna start, make sure that gets done every year a little bit, and we start getting these other streets that need to get done. So this is plain catch-up, but it's a good program, and we need to maintain that, keep that going. So I'm committing Measure A funds to do slurry seal every year. Okay. So we'll go to trails. As the council approved earlier, or about a month or two ago, our plan related to California, we are also, you also approved various trail fencing to be in place at different locations. These are the, these are the locations that you previously approved. That contract is already out to bid, should come back in the next few weeks. So again, that'll be something that'll start shortly in the summertime, it's not something we're gonna prolong and await, so this will get done fairly early in the fiscal year. Now move on to the water improvement projects. So again, we have several large projects that we have been working all year long, the one that's gonna come to you tonight, which is Hamner Avenue, that's a pretty significant dollar figure, that's 1.7 million. So again, that will start, you know, probably by June, once we do all the semittals, et cetera, and get contracts in. So that'll be a project that'll be working in the summertime, again, finally getting it underway. We're working on a new building for the Public Works yard that we need to replace some existing dilapidated buildings, so we'll have two storage buildings once this one is finished, and that's being co-funded between sewer and water. The other, we're doing a pressure station that we need to do, it also includes the interconnection work with the City of Riverside, that that's gonna get, you know, engineered and built, so that's an assumed cost for that. The second page on there for water, again, another big project, it was Temescal Waterline, Fourth, Fourth Street to Fifth Street, that was already designed a year ago, but we had to put it on the shelf because we didn't have money. Now we have the funds to do it, so that's going to, it's already going to bid tomorrow. And then another project, which is Vine Street, Corridon, DeBronco, Driftwood, and Half Moon, that also was designed over a year ago and put on the shelf, lack of funds, that is going out to bid tomorrow. So again, two, two, three major water lines are gonna get, finally gonna get repaired in this fiscal year, for sure. Each of those streets, just to point out, will get also street resurfacing, complete. So again, we're trying to make sure, and some of the storm drain projects that I mentioned previously earlier, will also get street repaired. So keep in mind, when you see some of these water lines going, or storm drains going, it will include a street repair. And so we get that road done and finish same time. And then, so that's the major project center that we're, that, that accomplished most of that money. The treatment plant also, we're almost nearly done with that design, we've had to go and made several changes back and forth. We've now determined the way we want to go, so, but that design should be done in the next month and a half, with construction finally being completed in this fiscal year. So that'll be a big improvement for us as far as increasing our capacity for the treatment plant, so we can add two wells versus one.
Question? Two, fire hydrant upgrades.
Yes, sir.
Is the, is the current status of our operable hydrants back where it needs to be? I mean, or, do we know a percentage of hydrants that are not operating?
I believe there, according to my staff, there's only two that currently aren't operable, and have more recent issues than anything else because of hit hydrants.
Okay.
I believe they've caught up to all the long-term hydrants. There might be still one on, I think, on Temescal, but I have to get verified, but we are way caught up from where we were, and, but there is still work to be done. That's why I want to make sure I keep money in that fund to keep up with it. We're now gonna start that second phase of our west side of the city, work with WACS and on doing the, the system. We'll probably inevitably find more or others that now failed, that weren't failed before. We just want to make sure we have the funds to quickly, and again, that's honestly a drop in the bucket, what it costs to repair, each 10,000 is probably one hydrant each, so, and I have money in my operations fund, too.
I don't have any objection with the cost, I just want to make sure we're, we're back where we need to be from our original shock of what was operating and what was not. But all our hydrants now, I mean, they've been flushed, tested.
Yes.
That whole program is basically complete?
Our, our program doesn't flush them, it tests them.
Tests them.
So I don't want to indicate I'm flushing them.
Got it.
I would love to do that, that's a whole different cost. But we, they are tested, absolutely. So I'm much happier with our program.
And we're 100% at that?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so that we can get this completed by time, you think you have about 10 minutes to get this done?
Yeah, I'm almost done now.
And then we'll just hold our questions until we come back on the next workshop.
So the next one is sewer. Again, project-wise, we have the current one that you guys have already approved, and we're about to go out to construction, is the Corona Lift Station and the Valley View Lift Station, that's our biggest project of the year. There's the new warehouse building that we're funding in there. We have some placeholders for recycle water system improvements, again, unlikely they're actually gonna be used, because we're still in standby of what we're gonna do with our recycle water system at this point. It's a discussion for later that I tend to come back and bring to council. We are doing a design for a, a one main line, but that'll just be for design work, not actual construction. And then, I do, again, have a recycle water storage project, again, is still on hold until we determine how, or how we're gonna use our recycle water. Again, but I want to put a placeholder in case we end up moving forward, that is half-funded by Flood Control. And then we have just miscellaneous work we do, we potentially, the biggest item on there at the bottom is 850,000 for, is, is the Rickra Recycle Water Pump Station, they still need to construct, which will send the water to the various agencies, that is still being vetted out, designed by Rickra, determine how the memories are gonna use it, but, so I have a placeholder really there, just to cover our costs if we finally come back with something. But I'm not anticipating necessarily at this point using this money, but I want to make sure there's placeholder was there. And then I have the Sewer Connection Fund, again, which, it's really a placeholder for funds we've gotten from the revenue that previously from the sewer districts. Again, no major projects planned for that except for some minor sewer line extensions, which we rarely do, and manhole upgrades, which happen time to time. That's 148. The last one is Street Improvement Fund, again, quite a few projects we're planning on doing this year. One of the ones I want to highlight is, again, the Hamner, is under widening, is, oh, excuse me, under slurry seal, again, there's now $300,000 for the slurry seal project, so that's a big chunk. We have a Hamner Avenue widening, which I'm in the process of trying to complete to get properties that can, we're probably only gonna get about half the properties that I'd like to, and we're gonna widen what we can to get height, and that's between Third and Fifth, but we'll widen those areas. The, we're still working on the Second Street widening to get folks on the I-15 dual right turn lane, that's a process that's dragging on, and, but a part of discussion for tonight. Same thing with Sixth Street, getting that dual right turn lane on there, onto, onto the I-15. The other projects I'm gonna highlight, again, we're looking at doing Crestview between Sixth and North. Half of that work, or, most of the work between Sixth and Seventh is being partnered with Flood Control, related to their flood control project they, they promised to go out with. So we've got, we're working on a funding agreement with that, we're gonna do half-street improvements and, and fund that. And then I want to continue on and do from Seventh to North, so we've got money funded there to take care of that, and we'll do design that, so that'll be a certainly big welcome improvement for the community in that area. We're planning to do Hamner from Third to Hidden Valley. Again, we've gone through this process, where our water line's gonna take us all the way through Third Street, we've already done from Sixth all the way to Third at that point, we want to go from Third all the way to Hidden Valley and get that whole roadway completed. That'll be a big help. We're doing Must End Lang, which is a road that's been left unresolved for quite a while, and we're gonna go ahead and repair that, that road, poor rating score. And then highlighting a couple other... And then highlighting a couple others farther down, we're going to be doing Mountain, and that's a partial repair. We're going from First to College, and obviously the worst area is between First and Second. We're anticipating, hopefully, there might be a project in the next year or two, but we unfortunately cannot wait any longer to do something on that road. So we're going to work with our engineers, we're going to do a very minor treatment that gets us through the next year or two, hopefully to a project where that developer will end up redoing the entire road, reconstructing it the right way. I hate to use a Band-Aid money, but I'd rather not do a full reconstruct when I know somebody else is coming in and could do it for us. So I've had discussions with the city manager, we're going to find something that's meaningful, has, certainly it'll be improvement, it's just not going to be what maybe people expect once they get on there, probably maybe two inches of AC, and, and that's about all we're going to do, is just get us through that, that time period. From Second Street to College, that's a full reconstruct. They will be true reconstructs. So there are other, we're doing Mountain for reconstruct, Fifth Street to Sixth Street reconstruct, that'll definitely get all done. We're going to be doing Pacific, that's an area that's poor, Paddock Lane is another that's a poor score. And the other major project that we're doing that I want to highlight is the overhead street sign. We're planning to do Hamner section, all the rest of those street signs. This number will actually go up, because again, we didn't get our parts we need to do the signs, so I, you currently approved and budgeted 150,000 to spend on signs and installation in this current year. I'm going to carry that 150,000 into here, so that number will change to 700,000, to make sure we're covered for this fiscal year coming up. So we'll do Sixth Street and Hidden Valley will get done in, in this next fiscal year, so that, that one number will change. And with that, we have to answer your questions you have.
Due to the time constraints, I'm going to ask that, and we meet on June 6th, we'll start with the CIP budget first, so council can ask questions of it, and then we'll take the second part when we're done with that, and we'll go over the remaining part for the general fund with this proposed budget reductions. So with that, does somebody else got something to say? Berwin? Robin? Kevin? Greg? No, we'll do that after next, because we're going to run out of time otherwise. And we'll hold those off until June 6th, we'll start with this CIP budget, and then we'll finish this one off, and then we'll go into the other part, if that's okay. Gives us plenty of time that way. You have this time to, look, you got all the time to look at it and come up with some excellent questions for him.
You just voted 5 on.
I like it. All right, that were adjourned.